So I am going to start the meeting at 6:02. We already had our school board meeting candidate information session. Oh, but what I should probably do is get someone to approve the agenda.
And welcome, Judy.
Show moved.
Right here.
And those seconded, thank you. I don't believe there's anything we need to remove or add. So correct me if I'm wrong. Okay, so all of those that approve the agenda, please press your green button. If you don't like it, press your red button. Becky's giving me a thumbs up, thank you.
Angela.
Angela said, yep, it's Bill I need a thumbs up on, yep, okay. And Barbara went to get a cup of coffee, but I think we're good because we have a quorum for that.
Okay, what was the question?
The agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, not so. Okay, we have an approved agenda, thank you. Board meeting evaluation results from December 16th is in your packet. We had two people respond, two out of 12. So, um, please do better this time. Next time I'll be more stern. Okay, communications with parents, citizens and staff. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to us? Okay, and then there was a let's talk about a couple of things about the budget. One was about the fact that we have a smaller population of kindergarteners in Lester than we do at Nashby. They were hoping we would add more teachers to Nashby so that we could have the same student to teacher ratio. So. And so we answered that to the best of our ability, mainly saying that the smaller school has a smaller student to teacher ratio and and people can take advantage of that if they so choose by taking the school choice option if they like.
I've got some feedback.
What was that? I'm sorry, Bill.
I've got some feedback.
Okay.
A reporter called and was asking about everybody's the north of, not everybody, but four or five districts in the north of us wanting to pull out under Act 46. And he was sharing a point that he had had with a citizen, which was when we have the one big budget, and we'll probably get into that. You can no longer tell what the expenditure is on a school basis, which can vary a great deal, of course, by enrollment of things. But in many ways, the point being made was in order to become more proficient, we actually make it less easy to read, less transparent.
As far as the budget is concerned?
Yes.
Bill, are you talking about that we don't list what a school by school cost is?
Yeah, I think that's true of everybody.
But but that's because, we had this conversation because Bonnie had asked about it earlier too, Bonnie Bourne. It's it's because you can no longer say that this staff belongs to this school. This staff belongs to this district and they can be moved around at any time. So you you can take a general cost of staff, multi, you know, an average multiplied by the number. And we do report out how many staff are at each school.
In fractions.
Yeah, and then and then there is a way to Brenda can talk about it when she's here to talk about the cost of running a building. We do know that information. And that can tell you what a school costs to run, but it and then but like the you're no longer assessing the central office assessment is no longer by school, it's by district. So so in a merged district, when you have multiple schools, you can't break it out as cleanly as when you had different districts feeding into an SU. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense.
It just, it isn't designed to be that way. So you could take a school and say it's going to cost X under a merged district, but it's going to cost X plus in an unmerged district because of seniority of staff or purchasing of services or whatever. It's not really possible to realistically do. But what we do in our budget and our budget presentation is we do break out for you in our budget presentation, like what staff is this, how many kids are in each school? And what the staff assignments per school and our class sizes are so that at least you have some sense. You'd have to do your own math. You'd have to take an average salary amount. But you'd have some sense of what it would cost to run that school. That would be my answer to the reporter, by the way, if they had called me.
You froze there at the particular moment.
Oh, sorry. That's interesting, though.
Well, you know, I worry about keeping the citizenry involved. I really do. And money is one of the things that gets their attention. Probably probably more than performance, unfortunately.
Okay, so hi, Bonnie. Um, because you came up on the screen, I wanted to say hi to you. I'll ask the question that I want to ask you, Bill, about that later when we get into budgets. But I would like to, we'll get back to that conversation, I think. I would like to move on to consent agenda, though, if we couldn't. Is there anything anyone wants to pull off before we go ahead and vote?
Yeah, Laurie, I'd like to pull the sexual harassment policy.
All right, anything else by anyone? All right, so we're going to go ahead and vote. I need someone to make a motion for the consent agenda minus item F.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All of those approved, please press your green button. If you do not approve, please press your red button. I see Bill giving me a thumbs up. Derek, thumbs up, thumbs down. Thank you. Bonnie?
Barry?
Yep. Barry's okay. I don't see. Bonnie. Oh, that's you, Bonnie. Bonnie's iPhone. Okay, sorry. Barbara? Thank you. Mike and Becky. Becky's saying yes, okay. And Mike, where are you? Mike is nowhere to be found. Well, we'll see. Okay, so all that looks like we've got it. So the consent agenda is approved. Let's see, so Schedule F, RNESU policy for action, item JBEAB, prevention of sexual harassment is prohibited by Title IX. It's a new policy. Can I get someone to make a motion so that then we can talk about it?
So moved.
Thank you, Becky. Second, perfect. Okay, discussion.
So I asked to have it pulled because it's quite a lengthy document and it's complex. And I confess I didn't get all the way through it. I just want to know where it came from, who wrote it. Is this language dictated by Title IX? Did our lawyer write it? Is it something suggested by the VSPA?
Betsy DeVos.
Okay, so that's.
So it could change.
So.
Out of the U.S. Department of Education under Betsy DeVos. It actually took effect, the law took effect July 1st, but it took a while for the model policy that really is the law rewritten, that's why it's so lengthy, to make its way to school districts. We have already begun implementing it because the law is in place. And the reason it's on consent agenda and not action agenda is because it's really an RNESU policy. So both boards have a chance to see it before it becomes final. But we were not really allowed to, it's another one of those laws that they turn into a policy that we're not really allowed to touch other than to have it on the books and follow it. It's not a great policy. I would not be surprised to find it cleaned up over the next couple of years, but by the U.S. Department of Ed, but that's what it is.
Okay, thank you. That answered my question.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion regarding this policy?
Barbara has her hand up.
Hey, Barbara.
Well, I am sorry to not be too well versed in the intricacies of the policy and its changes. Is there somewhere I can look for or someone I can ask for just a quick summary of what makes this different from previous? I can't hear you.
Oh, Jean, you're muted.
We already have an HHB policy and sexual harassment is already covered in that HHB policy. The this particular Title IX policy, basically, we would follow our same investigative procedures, but there's an extra layer of protection for both both the alleged perpetrator and the alleged victim that we would have to ask additional questions for to see if it fell under this particular policy. So, for example, either could ask for a meeting with the other party, which does not exist in our other policy, which I'm not sure I'm always comfortable with. So there there are, it kind of takes the current sexual harassment, takes it like a step further. It would, I didn't come prepared to give you the breakout, but if you looked at this and you compared it to the other HBB policy and sexual harassment, I think you'll kind of see where it it stands out. There. So it adds, it adds to our investigative and response process.
It's new, correct? We didn't have it before.
Right, it, the federal government, again, Betsy DeVos, just passed it, it became law in July. And we're catching up, the, everybody's catching up to putting the policy out after it became law.
Let me ask.
The law requires the policy.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, this raises raises little matter of civil disobedience, if you will. Why are we being dragged into our force to vote on this issue for which we have no option?
Because to not do that, I would be putting the district at risk for liability from a lawsuit for not having the policy on the books.
Says who?
Says the federal government. It's a law, so somebody could sue us under the law. The law says we have to have the policy on the books. So if I don't have the policy on the books, I'm not obeying the law and the district is liable.
It says we must have this policy on the books or we must have a policy?
This policy. This policy is basically the law verbatim.
Well, why did they do something so redundant? That's a waste of taxpayer money. I won't belabor it.
I think you just answered your own question, Bill. Okay, so I'm assuming that the two little blue hands that I'm seeing are have been taken care of, Barbara and Bill, to the best of our ability. So I'm going to take this to vote. So all of those that approve the new policy, JBEAB, prevention of sexual harassment is prohibited by Title IX, please press your green button or red button for no. Or give me a thumbs up and keep doing it because, oh, Bill's saying no, okay. Anybody else? Because and please keep it up because I cannot see everybody all at once. All right, so we got three no's, we got three yeses. Bill said no, so three, three. Bonnie C., what about you? Yes or no?
She she did thumbs up.
Okay, so that's four, three. Who am I missing? And Becky?
Becky, I think, was a yes.
Okay, all right, so we have five yeses and.
Mike, I don't see Mike.
Yeah, he just put.
Mike says no.
He said no. So we have five yeses and four nos. So it passes. Okay, thank you. All right, so the next thing, so because we have principals here who are probably here for our board.
I'm not ready to do budget until Brenda shows up. I'm very.
Okay, well, then I guess you have to stick to that. Sorry, guys.
Yeah, she's she's finalizing numbers right now and. Sorry, guys.
All right, then we'll start with our monitoring report interpretations for 2.3, which is financial condition and activities. It is in your board packet. Let's see, let's see if I can find it. Here it is. So tonight, we're just looking at Jean's interpretations. And we are not looking at her whether or not she's in compliance with that policy.
Right, and Barstow had asked for both 2.3 and 2.4, and there was no reason not to give it to all the boards. So you had originally asked for just one, but you got both.
Cool. So I do have a question. All of these say amended or new. And I wonder, is it just a new rationale from the last time we gave it to us?
Yes, yes. So so as you get into a a cycle of reviewing those, I actually have to look at it with fresh eyes and some things that gave me fresh eyes is COVID, for example, or something that occurs that I didn't think about the first time I did it, maybe our IRS situation. But I have to revisit it. And so our consultant, Val, recommends that during the interpretation, I note if I amended it from the last time you got it so that, like, like somebody asked about the, how do you compare the policies, so that you you know that there has been a change from the last time I said it. I interpreted it. So that's what I did. Brenda and I do this policy together. Both of these policies because they're finance. So I don't know if there are any questions or if you want me to walk through any of it or.
My first question, and anybody else can jump in here, is that your first one says you shall not expend more funds that have been authorized in this fiscal year. I'm just curious why your interpretation is amended to cross out without board approval?
Why did I cross that out? Because. I don't know. I wonder if I was adding without board approval and it got the cross out, you know what I mean?
Oh, okay.
Because you can, I can come to you and say. I can come to you and say, you know, we had a boiler blow up and I have to go out and buy a new boiler and it's not in the budget. And you can say, yeah, you have to go out and buy a new boiler. But I can't like just do it.
Right.
So.
Because it says in the next line that.
Oh, yeah.
The board is notified. So you don't need to have it twice. You only need it once.
Thank you, Angela, for reading.
There you go. Awesome. It was a trick question.
It was a good one. But I I believe that Angela's right. It was just redundant.
Okay.
Again, I can't expend more funds than have been budgeted. That's a very similar one. I cannot allow unbudgeted debt to accrue. But I can do it in the short term. For example, if we need to do short term borrowing because we're waiting for taxes to come in. But then it's not otherwise unencumbered revenues in the fiscal year. I cannot use long term reserve funds. Only you can. I. There there are laws and best practices that the auditor want on how we shift any funds into departmental funds. So that one's identified. I have to make sure that we continue to pay our debts in a timely manner so that we have vendors still willing to work with us. I, now here's, when you get this next report, allow tax, number seven, allow tax payments or other government order payments or filings to be overdue. You will find that I will report noncompliance on this one because we discovered this fall that last January, the March date changed to January. We paid it in March and so therefore I violated this, which I informed you as soon as I became aware of. And we have fixed it because it's the January filing and that's taking place this month. And I'll give you that update as well. But this is a good example of where you might not otherwise have known that if it weren't for the monitoring report that says I have to inform you if I violate any of these things. I can't spend any surplus revenues that you haven't authorized to be spent. I can't make a single unbudgeted purchase or commitment greater than 15,000. I have to pursue receivables. And your policies added acceptance of non-resident students, kind of. You you absorbed former policies into this area that I have to basically follow follow the law and have a procedure around non-resident students. So all of those interpretations are in there and next meeting I would bring you, not next meeting, the first February meeting, I would bring you my compliance report and evidence report on how I did each of those areas. But tonight, if you disagree with any of my interpretations, is the time to have that discussion.
Okay, Bill, you have your hand up.
Yeah, perhaps I have just misheard, but it sounded like you could. It used to be that over many years you had to have board approval, and that seems to have gone by the wayside. But then it also says that you can pay for extended. I'm sure I'm getting this backwards, but it sounded like in one case you had the authority to spend surplus money and another place it didn't.
No, I do not have authority to spend surplus money or long term reserve money. Only you do.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear that that way.
Okay.
Yeah, and usually surplus money comes to us in June. She tells us what we, she thinks we have for surplus and we decide where we want that money to go.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Great. Okay, so anybody else have any other questions or thoughts about any of the interpretations that Jean has for policy 2.3, financial conditions and activities? Hearing none. You don't need us to approve or do anything like that. We just move on, right?
You just move on tonight to the next one, which is 2.4?
Yep.
And this one's financial planning and budgeting. There is a link in there that brings you to the school district budget development assumptions. And our budgeting includes multi-year facility plans, capital bond amortization, multi-year enrollment projections and our negotiated agreements and covers July 1st to June 30th. And we really use, I don't know how you say these, GAAP, GASB, FASAB. Brenda's logging on. She can correct me. I can't risk incurring situations that make us, that are unacceptable, and those are identified in the interpretation. I have to report credible projections of revenues and expenses, separate capital and operational items, tax cash flow and disclosure of planning assumptions. And I have to meet your request for your board prerogatives that you set forth at the budget time back in October. And I also have to include information on the anticipated impact of the proposed budget, which actually I have not done to date because we do that after we get the revenue information. So we'll have that for you tonight when when Brenda joins us. When she's joining us now. Any questions on those interpretations or concerns about those interpretations on what each of those mean? Kind of builds the box within which I have to manage the district's budget.
I'm not seeing any. Shout out if I'm missing something. Okay, so that means next month in February, we will get monitoring reports with her evidence and her compliance. Yes or no's in our first meeting in February. Okay. Awesome. So Brenda is here with us, so I'm going to move us to a budget. So we're just going to skip down a little bit and review your 22 budget and warning and schedule a special budget approval meeting. Right now, that's set for next Wednesday.
If you need it, depending on what you do tonight. So there are a few things that you need to do either tonight or next Wednesday. You need to, there's still an item on the agenda which we'll get to on final, like closing your question on whether you wish to go to a electronic annual report or not that you opened. That question was opened last meeting. You need to finalize your budget amount, your warning, and all of that has to be done by the end of next week. So you don't have to do it all tonight. We have a special meeting scheduled for next Wednesday if you'd like to use it. I also am going to want to talk to you tonight about the pending legislation that allows towns and school districts to change the date of their budget vote. So I'd like to do that before we end the budget discussion as well. So that you understand what can and cannot be done and the ramifications of such. With that, Brenda has been working up until the final hour to. View. Think this will work. Does that work? Okay. To collect, I mean, she was still collecting information at 4 o'clock this afternoon from the Agency of Ed that we need for this next phase of the budget. So I'm just going to do a very brief review because we are being recorded and there may be somebody listening in. This slide will have to be updated because as of tonight, we are including revenues. We have an estimated tax rate. We talked about it last time, but as of tonight, we are including the estimated equalized pupils. The budget, actually, I'm not sure if I can, Brenda, because I'm not sure how you change these slides. Do you want to?
So I put the changes in the front. Do you want to start about the backup or do you want to start with the changes?
Why don't.
Changes.
Yeah, change.
Just go to the changes? Okay, so the the first slide that I can't move her back, but the first slide indicated the things that were missing. And so I started with those, the things that have been added that we have now received. And so that has reflected in a budget increase, a budget expenditure increase of just shy of $70,000 for that 69,445. Vocational cost was the biggest number, and that is basically an assessment. Just to remind you, that is for any of our students who attend either the Stafford Technical Center in Rottland or the Patricia Hannaford Center at in Middlebury. And it is based on the most current six semester average, and it is assessed to us. So it is an after the fact amount based on that average, not based on a per tuition, per time that students are there, which is why it comes in so late. So that has resulted in an increase of about 91,000. And it's not necessarily good, bad or indifferent. It just means we have more students attending the technical center and not necessarily directly at the high school. And so we've received their increased cost estimates based on their tuitions, and that's reflected in the 94,000. Since we last met, we also had retirement notices come in and the principals and I went through line by line of all of the personnel salaries. And in doing that, we found a savings of about $24,000. So that's reflected in this budget. I will also let you know that we actually found a larger savings, but you'll recall in the last budget meeting, the first draft did not include an additional teacher at the high school for MTSS intervention and support services. And so that was accommodated in this as well. So we added a new teacher at Otter Valley, recorded the retirement savings and corrected some budget estimate errors based on health insurance changes for an overall net savings of about 24,000 from the last budget. And the central office assessments, we had told you in the last time that we expected them overall to be level funded based on surpluses during last fiscal year, fiscal year 20, those. Sorry. Should I keep going? Okay.
I have a question. I don't, I don't know what MTSS stands for.
Multi-tiered system of supports, right?
MTSS is, it stands, very good question, Kevin. It stands for multi-tiered system of supports. It is our intervention system for students who are not meeting the standards. So if you're not special ed, but you're not achieving, then at the elementary levels, we have academic interventionists who work particularly on literacy and math with students. At the high school, we haven't. At the high school, we haven't had that and we've it's been identified as a need for us. That we need to have some tiers of support. It shouldn't be an all or nothing.
Are we required to use M T S S by federal regulation or something? It's sort of a misleading term.
Tiers of support, it's interchangeable. Vermont's terminology uses M T S S. I don't think there's a law on it.
Yeah, okay. Brenda, the sixty-nine thousand and one, is that the net of the three following items?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good question. So the central office assessments, we had anticipated that they would be level funded. And they were actually, and I should probably have put it in bold instead of in small numbers. They were actually down overall by thirty-three thousand dollars thanks to significant savings in special education. During the pandemic. So when people um. Left the district or services could be reduced or changed, Marsha was very successful in saving that. Your Otter Valley assessment actually went up just a smidgen, twenty-five hundred dollars overall. And that was just a result of shifts between pupil counts between Barstow and Otter Valley. So basically just the cutting of the pie a little bit differently. So the final proposed budget from fiscal year twenty-one to fiscal year twenty-two. Is up three point two five percent or six hundred and sixty-two dollars.
And so when you say final proposed budget, that's the expenditure budget.
Yes.
After all these numbers are corrected, so our.
After these numbers are incorporated, yes.
Expenditures are up three point two five percent or six hundred and sixty-two thousand.
Yes.
That increase, three point two five is the equivalent of six hundred and sixty-two, or is that the sum of it?
Three point two, three point two five percent equals six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. We have a twenty million dollar budget.
What's the total budget?
I think if Jean goes to the next slide, it might show us. Oh.
We get the first, the first slide that we missed.
Yeah.
This one?
One more. These were, so this, yeah.
That's all you got one.
These were just the things that you, we didn't talk about before, Kevin, or or all of you. Because we didn't have that information in December.
So the next slide covers number two. That's what you've just covered is number two expenditures changes.
Yes.
We will cover the others, but this is the expenditure changes.
So if you go to the next slide. We'll talk about the the revenues. So and you know, revenues are a broad term. To me, it's anything that is used in the calculation of revenues I put under that revenue heading. So equalized pupils is the number of students that we have changed from last year to this year. That is up just a hair, four point five five students or point three five percent. Our local revenues. So these are revenues that we do not have to raise through property taxes. We do not have very many of these. No school in Vermont has very many of these. The biggest one of our local revenue is actually. Money from our trust funds to pay for the debt service on the Ely and the Burditt or the. Nashby and the Pittsburgh biomass boiler conversion projects. So they've been incorporated in there, but they're pretty level. The other thing we have in local revenues is we have interest earnings, which is not very much. It's just based on the. Differences when we have a little bit of excess cash and then we have tuition. And we do see that our tuition revenues are going down because we have two less students. This is never a very big revenue category because we don't have a lot of tuition students.
How many are there?
Excuse me?
How many are there?
So um, so there are in next year's proposed budget, there are four students at the high school. All from Barstow and one student in elementary school from Ira.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So local education spending, number three, middle of the page, this is kind of the driver of everything. And so the definition of local education spending is your total budget. Minus the revenue that you don't need to raise in property taxes or minus your local revenue. For us, our local education spending is up three point five percent. And I'll walk you through how we go from there to a tax rate. This is just a summary. But you take that local education spending, you divide it by number one, the equalized pupils. And you get an education spending per pupil and that's what drives the tax rate. So our proposed or this draft's proposed education spending per pupil. For equalized pupil is four hundred and eighty-four dollars or up three point five percent. And that does result in a proposed tax rate increase of about five point two percent or seven cents. And you may recall that when we spoke in December, we have to use the most current information that we have available. And that is the December first tax commissioner letter that I believe you all received. And or if you didn't, we can send you a copy.
Brenda, the education spending per student is up forty-four to to what number?
I'll show you that on the next slide if you.
Okay, okay.
Moment, Barry. Thanks.
Well, you also hit the base on the next slide.
I will, yes.
Okay.
Brenda, you have an informed board who wants you to be faster.
I know, and my Vanna's not keeping up with us. I'm just kidding. The other last component, I just want to go over this because um, you know, I. Because it's all important at the unified union rate. But what it really means to taxpayers depends on the town you live in. And that depends on your common level of appraisal. And so I just wanted to show you the column to the left is the column, the the common level of appraisal. I get that every week as my little, every year as my Christmas present. Those came in over the Christmas holiday and then the column to the right tells you what last year's was. So there's two things of importance on here. One, the closer you are to a hundred, the closer you are to our flat unified rate. And the better and more fairly overall you are appraised in your town. None of us are really bad, as you can see. Some of us are a smidgen over over appraised. But the next component is the change from last year to this year. Because the common level of appraisal is used to calculate your tax rate. So when it changes from year to year, that change also is reflected in your tax rate. So thankfully, and I was a little worried about this because we saw with the pandemic. A lot or high sales in the summer. And I was worried that we might start seeing our common level of appraisal slipping. Because houses were selling very quickly during the pandemic. I I believe they still are. I haven't. I haven't looked at a lake home since, but um. Our common level of appraisals did not change much. You can see that Brandon is essentially flat. Goson has grown a little bit. Yay. Goson always does that because there's only three properties. Lester has declined just a little bit. Pittsburgh has declined a little bit. Sudbury has declined a little bit and Whiting has increased just a smidgen.
For example, in Goson, the eighty-eight point eight to ninety-three point three eight is a gain. Our lesser tax bill, our vice versa.
So it is a lesser tax bill when you compare from last year to this year. So when you gain that much, it means you will see an you will see a lesser increase. So this, I believe, I have to move you all to the next slide because I can't see it. So this, I believe, was what you're looking for. Our total budget is the, oops, is the top line, twenty-one million. Last year's total budget or the year we're in right now. Sorry, it shouldn't say proposed fiscal year twenty-one. That's the actual budget for fiscal year twenty-one. Is twenty million three, which is that increase of six hundred and sixty-two or three point two five percent. The local revenues, again, level pretty flat with the exception of two less tuition students. So we have a net education spending of twenty million five hundred and six thousand. Which is three and a half percent over last year. Our equalized pupils stayed relatively flat. Therefore, our education spending increase went from, and I believe this was your question, Barry. Fifteen thousand three ninety-nine last year to fifteen thousand eight eighty-three this year. For four hundred and eighty-four dollars. We're just at that three percent. So what does this all mean to a tax rate? The, and that's where the Vermont Department, the the tax announcement letter of December first comes into play. The current year, the yield is in parentheses, the current year is ten thousand nine ninety-eight. And what that means is in that education spending per. Per equalized pupils, where we're spending in the current year, fifteen thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars. The first ten thousand nine ninety-eight has a dollar tax rate. The percentage spending between ten thousand nine ninety-eight and the fifteen three ninety-nine. That percentage is an equal percent on the tax rate. And so our current tax rate is a a nice round dollar forty. This yield is actually going from ten nine ninety-eight down to ten seven sixty-three. So immediately that means our dollar tax rate buys us two hundred dollars. Two hundred and thirty-six dollars or something like that, less in spending per pupil this year than it did last year. And that's just the early announcement as of December first. But it is based on and calculated based on statute. So it defines the calculation mechanism, which does include estimates on what education spending. Throughout the state is going to look like, what's going to be needed for teacher retirement and education funds. As well as general fund revenues. So that decrease of ten thousand seven hundred and sixty-three makes our three and a half, three percent. Per pupil spending increase actually five percent in a tax rate or seven. To eight cents, depending on how towns round.
Let me check my understanding. This is memory lane. The difference between the ten thousand seven hundred and sixty-three. And the fifteen thousand is what would be assessed uniformly across the district, considering C L A.
Nope, C L A is on the next slide. So this is the uniform rate, a dollar forty-seven. And then how that impacts each town will be in the next slide.
Okay.
Are there any other questions on that slide before we get into the town by town questions?
That's the local tab, really, is what that.
Brenda, can I just make an observation?
Yes.
So one of the things about our unified tax rate going up as high as it is, that seven point six cents. Is because the yield is dropping, correct?
Absolutely.
So that two hundred and thirty-five dollar difference in the yield multiplied by our equalized pupils.
Right, you've got to make that up to be able to spend the same thing spending right now.
Right. Well, I just wanted people to understand that because I, you know, when you look at this, you're like, oh, my gosh. We're going up seven point six cents, but the, but a lot of this is because our yield is going down.
Right, and not just our yield, the statewide yield.
State yield, I should say.
Right. It's a, it's a statewide decision to provide less money per pupil.
Right.
So that that drop, that two hundred and sixty-three, because I just put it in my calculator. Is actually two point four percent increase.
Okay. Well, I just think that's something that we need to, you know, when we're talking to. Community members and whatnot, they're gonna be like, it's a seven point six percent increase or seven point six cent increase. You're looking at five percent. Well, a lot of this has to do with the yield being dropped by the state.
Yes, and the other thing I I want to point out is. The yield that we currently have right now, the ten thousand nine ninety-eight. At this time last year, that was ten thousand six sixty-six. So that number does not get finalized until the legislature is done with all of their work. It is one of the last bills that get adopted. And so, you know, this is the best we know now. I think even in the letter, the commissioner said, you know, the governor and the legislature are really hopeful. To be able to see that yield go higher or hoping that, you know, they feel that that's a conservative number. So I can't promise that it will be better, but I can tell you that historically. The good news is it's never been worse. And last year it did go up by just over three hundred dollars.
And unfortunately, that happens after your budget goes to vote.
Yes. Sometimes we know around town meeting and sometimes that's kind of discussed so that we can share it at town meeting. You know, I can't predict this year, obviously.
So I would go back to the fact that your expenditure budget is up six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars or three point two five percent. That's the part of all this puzzle that you actually have direct control over. The rest is state-driven and unsettled, not not yet final.
Can I just add, ask one more question about the local revenue? Because we have kids that come from Barstow. When do we know that the eighth graders might be coming to Otter Valley and not to a different? High school? Do we know that now when we're budgeting or do we not know that till June?
Yes and no. I work with the the folks at Barstow. And we make our best educated guesses on where the eighth graders are going to go, the current eighth graders. And we often look at their siblings. So if their sibling is is going to Otter Valley, we assume that they'll go to Otter Valley. This budget is conservative and it only includes the kids we know of. And it does match to to Barstow's. So they are, you know. Both ends of the same coin, so we don't have any eighth graders that currently have siblings that are at Otter Valley. If we did, I would have added an extra student. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Okay, so what does it mean to each town? And that's what this graph really tells you is so you take that current rate, that dollar forty-seven and you adjust it. I'm sorry, you take the the dollar forty-seven rate, the unified rate, and you adjust it by the C L A. You just divide by it. So you can see in Brandon, their C L A is below a hundred. So their dollar forty-seven is increased a little bit to make it the equivalent of a dollar. Of a hundred percent. And so they would have a proposed tax rate of a dollar fifty. And their current tax rate is a dollar forty-eight, a dollar forty-one. So that's an eight cent increase or five, five and a half percent increase. Part of the reason why you see Brandon going up five point five percent in the homestead tax rate. Versus the five percent that the unified rate is, is because the C L A did decline a little. So to answer your question, Bill. There's something wrong with that formula because, no, I guess there isn't. So so to answer your question, Bill, Goson's C L A actually increased enough so that your. Proposed rate affected after C L A will go from the dollar forty-seven to the dollar fifty-eight. But last year you were also at a dollar fifty-eight, so you have a level, no increase in this proposal. Lester, again, the dollar forty-seven adjusted by the ninety-six point nine C L A. Gives them a proposed rate of a dollar fifty-two. Their last year rate was a dollar forty-one, so they'd be looking at a twelve percent increase. Pittsburgh, same thing, almost exactly similar numbers ironically. Sudbury and Whiting are both quote-unquote over appraised, so you can see in the proposed rate column. Sudbury's a dollar forty-seven drops to a dollar forty-nine, a dollar thirty-nine. Thirty-five, dollar thirty-five. And last year it was a dollar twenty-six. So they do see a nine cent increase. So here, even in this case, you can see Sudbury is over appraised. That's why the difference in C L A is important. So Sudbury is over appraised by nine percent, a hundred and nine point forty. And what that basically means is a house on the sub. And what that basically means is a house on the Sudbury Town List is listed at a hundred thousand, and it's selling at a hundred and nine. That's how that formula really works. And so the tax rate of a dollar forty-seven, the unified rate divided by the one oh nine, drops it to a dollar thirty-five. But because last year's tax rate was also adjusted by CLA, their, and their CLA was higher, their decline was higher. So you can see their increase was, was bigger. And that holds true for Whiting as well. That Whiting grew. It didn't, it didn't go down. So it was a hundred and three overappraised or three percent overappraised last year, and it's now five percent. So.
Is the CLA a rolling average or one year? I've forgotten.
The CLA is a three-year average of sales.
Which stabilizes the numbers.
Some, in theory, yes.
You don't sound very confident that the state is telling this.
If, if that is true, then why is, why is Lester going up so drastically again this year? I mean, we just went up a big chunk last year. Now we're going it again? If it's a three-year average, wouldn't it kind of average out eventually?
Well, Lester's rate is still really good. You know, you were at ninety-nine percent appraisal last year, and you're at ninety-six percent appraisal this year. That could be a very expensive lake home that sold higher than it was appraised at.
Just shows you that Lester's real estate is getting more attractive.
Yes.
Let's hope by the time I retire.
Yeah. So CLA is a double-edged sword, you know? I mean, if, if our CLA is low, then that, and you're trying to sell your house, you're happy because that means you're selling your house higher than the grand list. But it also means your tax rate is jumped up to, to make those level to a hundred percent. And of course, if you're buying a house, you want the, you know, you, you don't want to pay more for it.
So I think that after this slide, it goes into the other, the other information that I had already provided to you. So the new, we can walk through it if you'd like, but the new information is here. Yeah.
When's the information meeting?
February twenty-fourth? Whatever that Wednesday is.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. We're Tuesday?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
No, we're Wednesday. Barstow is Tuesday.
Barstow's Tuesday.
Is February twenty-fourth at six thirty.
Yes, twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Anybody else have any questions regarding the budget at this time? Barry, your hand.
Yeah, I have my hand up. Lori, just to go along with your comment about the yield, I think this budget is, I know it's, it's a difficult one, I guess is, is a good word to use. Those are high increases at, at a time in the climate where people are really kind of looking for the opposite of that. And your comment about the yield is, is legitimate. However, the, the cost per equalized pupil went up more than the yield went down. So when we look at the drivers for the bottom line budget, I think we need to also be supportive of the fact that the controllables that went up did so because of things that we approved and that we wanted. It's not strictly that we're looking at a, a very high budget because of the, you know, the lack of input from the state.
It's just a contributing factor. That's all I wanted to make note of.
It's true. And I guess, and all I'm saying is in conversations as we talk about the budget, as we're going to going forward, we really need to support the things that were in the controllables that we wanted to have there that really were drivers for increases. I don't want to paint the picture of the budget being high because, you know, it's, it's COVID-related or state-related.
I, I wasn't trying to do that at all. I just wanted to make sure that when someone goes, oh, my goodness, it's a seven point six percent or seven point six cent increase, that we can say, yes, but the yield did go down, and that, and that's two point five cents of it. That, that's like a third. And that, so I think it's, I, it's just another talking point. I'm not trying to, you know, say that this is the best budget and that, you know, it's the state's problem that it's going up, whatever it's going up, but I, it's just another piece of the puzzle. And, and so, yes, our budget is going up because we want the things that we've wanted by six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. But also, you know, the yield is going down, which means that they're going to provide less funding.
Also, the appropriation, we, can we believe the numbers that we have for appropriations, Brenda Jean? In other words, if they hit this financial crutch, which they are going to do, one way of doing that is lowering the yield and transferring the cost to the local property tax. How's that scenario sound, Jean and Brenda? Is that realistic?
I imagine there's going to be a lot of shell games happening in the next couple of weeks. We just don't know.
I think that, you know, on that slide that Jean just had, we own three percent of that increase to, to, to be, you know, very frank, Barry, based on the, the proposed increases that we have, from salary and budget, cost of livings to shiftings of positions, we own that education spending increase of three point oh five. Or as Lori said, the six hundred and sixty-two, the three point, the tax rate increase, the seven or eight cents, depending on rounding, or that five percent, that difference between the three and five, that two percent is because of the yield change. And I think it's important to know that that yield change is not finalized yet. Everything above that is pretty static at this point. I mean, unless, unless there's a directive to take back on things we've talked about, they won't change. And so the legislature and the governor are not happy with the yield of ten thousand seven sixty-two. And in preparing that proposal and, and, and doing it, they have to follow a statutory calculation. But when they come to actually setting it later on in the legislative session, they will have more information about how CRF funds came in and were able to help or not help. We ourselves were able to save some education spending funds based on repurposing some CRF monies. Other districts were doing the same. So they'll have better economic data by the time they set it. Again, I can't guarantee that they won't set a number different than that. But historically, even pre-COVID days, they've never reduced that number since the, the yield has been set in statute. So they've only increased it, and if they increase it, then our percentage increase will, will change. Will go down. If they increase it, then our tax rate increase will go down. The common level of appraisal, I think everyone understands that is far out of anyone's control. Not that, not to, to belittle it that it doesn't matter, but it isn't something that we could realistically adjust budgets for.
You know the percent state share off the top of your head?
I do not. I will tell you that our education spending per pupil is, I don't obviously know fiscal year twenty-two's number yet, but fiscal year's twenty-one is about a thousand dollars below the average. So by the time we come to presenting our budget, the informational meeting, the whole state information will be out, and I will have better information on what averages look like. But historically, our education spending per equalized pupil is below the state average.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions? Barry, was your question answered, or do, do you want to have other comments?
It wasn't really a question. It was just a comment. And, and really, I was just looking to kind of get a sense of, you know, how do we go forward? How do we communicate? What, what's really the message behind what I think is, like I say, a difficult budget? You know, those are, those are tough numbers for people to swallow at a time when they were probably looking for them to be a lot less. That's all.
Okay, great. Thank you. Other comments from other board members or anyone else for that matter?
Yes, another subject to bring up to people is that the state's going to get their money back somehow for the money that they've been spending during COVID. So the fact that they're giving us less money is another reason how, or another way that they get their, some of their money back. So not that I'm defending the, the down, but it's another talking point.
That's reality. This is a tough one.
Yeah, included in the December first announcement, included in that formula calculation is current revenue estimates. And I don't know if you recall, but when we, when the governor and the legis, I guess it was the governor, really started talking about it in September, those revenues kept getting better. So I don't know if they're still getting better. Obviously, all of that was before this most recent surge. But they, those revenues, so sales tax revenues, those sales revenues that help support the education fund are part of that calculation. So when the economy is, is shut down and turned down and like it was under COVID, it, it has that ripple effect.
Barry, if I could comment on your thoughts, I mean, you're right. The board always has to balance, what are you proposing for a budget and why? What changes in it? And then the other side is the impact. The difficulty with the impact of that proposal is it's an anticipated impact that usually changes from the December first letter to the May final decision. So helping people understand that is, is very complicated. So I go back and root in, what is it that Otter Valley Unified Union School District wants for their kids? What mod, where are they spending their money? And Brenda has to update the other slides that were in there, but we're spending eighty-five percent of our monies on direct services to kids. And how are we making changes based on changing population? That was in that one slide. That, that's your defensible, that's where you can make your decisions, and that's, that's kind of what people need to know. Getting, you, you can't, you can't deny the impact. There's going to be an impact. But you don't really know what it is.
Yeah, no, I, I feel you. I do. And, and I, I'm not throwing shade on anything because I think it's where we are and, and what we've proposed was all really very well-based. It was really accomplishing goals and, and ideals that we have for the district. So I, I think that's all great. But I just felt as though, I don't know what I feel. I guess I'm a little conflicted because I feel as though how this is going to be received. The timing, the timing of, of looking for increases at a time when the state is pretty much pulling the rug out from under you is, is awkward, I guess. And, and I don't want to fall into a place where, where we're communicating with people, you know, that this budget is, is driven a lot by the fact that, that the economic state of Vermont is, is challenged. That a lot of the costs we're putting in is because of all the, of all the slides we had in the last presentation where it was really built upon accomplishing goals for the district.
Right. Well said.
Well, I think it's that and the fact that we are, are still giving raises to our, to our teachers and our staff. So, I mean, that's, that's the, more than just giving, you know, the kids what they need. We also have an increase every year for our staff. So I don't see this as a huge increase from previous years, just because it's, I mean, we have raises that we give. We have salary changes every year, and that's usually tends to be the biggest chunk. And then we have maybe a percent or two that we can really control. I mean, we can control, obviously we control salaries, but it's harder to control it because we're in negotiations, whereas the rest of it, we have really, really hands-on control of.
One thing I'd like to ask and comment on this, when's the last time we lost the budget?
Two years ago. It was, I think it was the year that I started.
We didn't lose it.
We haven't lost the budget since we were merged.
Barry, that was Brandon Town. The school district hasn't, hasn't for, I don't, I don't know how far back, not in my seven years.
I've been on for many years, and we, as Otter Valley School District, when, when it was, I was on the Otter Valley School Board, haven't lost. And then as this, as we act forty-six, we haven't, we haven't lost the budget yet. I think we have lost when we asked for extra money for a separate line item, not the budget.
We lost our bond vote that we had a while ago, but we haven't lost any.
Operating budget. My comment is that we should count our blessings, that we have a really supportive constituency. And let's keep them happy as best we can and contact with them, invite them and do everything we can to keep that trust up. It's probably the most sensible thing we have.
Absolutely.
So the question becomes, if there's other questions, I would love to hear them. The question becomes, are we ready to vote tonight, or do we want to have that special meeting next week? To give us another week to contemplate.
Well, if we're going to have a special meeting for public input or for board input?
The public was, I have been inviting the public to these meetings. I don't know how else you're going to get more people to come. You aren't cutting things that are favorite programs of folks? That's how you get people to come.
Yeah. Or have outrageous increases for some reason.
I would, I would ask Brenda, is there anything that's going to change in the next week?
Good question, Angela.
Because if it's not, then it makes no sense to wait. If there is something that could possibly change and make it look better, I would wait. Because this is the budget, if we agree tonight, correct Brenda, this is the budget that we're going to take to the people. So if it's going to get better, I'd wait. If it's not, this is my opinion. If it's not, then I would say let's just.
I would wait too. Why ask for input on a budget that they not having any real input on?
So that, it's a fair question. It's a good question, Angela. And it's actually, I am not going to get any more information than I already have that's going to affect the total budget or the revenues. And you're actually in a position where you get the best of both worlds. If equalized pupils, which have not yet been finalized, if they change, then that would reflect in a tax rate change, but that you can't do anything about anyways, and that change would be very minor. I have worked with, I do work with the people in our office who review various different phases of the equalized pupil calculation, especially Alexis, and have analytically looked at this, these numbers and feel confident that they are, they are good. Last year at this time, we knew we had a major problem, not at Otter Valley, but at Barstow. So I don't foresee, and, and your equalized pupil doesn't change much. That's the only thing that's really not yet finalized before we go to budget vote. The other piece will be finalized when the legislature finalizes. So you can't wait for that, and that would be the yield. So I, I won't have any better information for you. So I, I won't have any better information for you a week from now, this is.
But to Bill's point, you could advertise what, what information you have tonight and say, here's one more chance to weigh in before we finalize. If we can get the word out.
Is, is or has Lee done?
No.
Any kind of, okay.
She hasn't, she, she probably would be like to, would like to.
Well, I'm just thinking that that, you know, that gets it a little bit further out there. Maybe. So I'm looking to you guys, I'm not going to make the decision for you. Oh, is someone talking?
I said, I just, I don't think it matters either way, really, I mean if it, if it gives the public more week to chime in, then it isn't going to hurt us any, so go for it.
It doesn't need to be a full meeting, it could be just the special budget meeting, it doesn't have to be.
Right, we could, we, if we finish this in an hour, we can get down to a half hour, even, so. Okay, so then I'm going to say that our, our meeting that we have, our special budget meeting that we have scheduled for six o'clock on the thirteenth is on, and we will finalize the budget and warning at that meeting.
Okay. Can we, can we at least touch base on morning town meeting day and electronic annual report maybe before Brenda leaves?
Yeah, why don't we do it now?
Because I don't really want Brenda to have the night off because she's only been working like around the clock on this, so why would I?
When's it ever been different?
Exactly, Bill, thank you for understanding. So you do have a copy of the budget warning and based on the fact that you're not finalizing the budget, you don't need to act on it tonight, but I just want to make sure that you do know that you have it. This year, you and most of the state voted to move your action items from your informational annual meeting to Australian ballot, so you'll see those also on the warning. So you'll be electing your moderator, district moderator, district clerk and district treasurer on Australian ballot on budget voting day. So that's also, excuse me, on the warning. To talk just a minute about town meeting day, there is a bill in front of the legislature which opened today, there's about to be a bill in front of the legislature that allows towns to, or districts to move their voting day off of town meeting day. I'm actually testifying on this tomorrow. I've been told that it's a done deal, even though the legislature just opened, it's going to be rushed through, it'll be voted out of the House next week. The, the intention is to suspend rules and get it through Senate and Governor probably by the week after. That's lovely for towns, that timeline does not work for you. You have a legislative timeline that's geared towards what your voting day is. And if this were to happen as fast as they say it would happen, let's just say in two weeks, it manages to go through the legislature historically. Then your eight, or sorry, six different select boards also then need to deliberate on whether or not they're going to change their voting days. You could find yourself in a situation where you have six different town voting days across the SU and then your own voting day. You, you could and unfortunately, by the time that happens, which best case scenario is three weeks from now, you will have blown past all of your deadlines for a March second town meeting day vote. And so what I'm basically saying is you either need to at next week's meeting, change your date in advance of knowing what other people are going to do, or determine that you're going forward with March second, no matter what. If a town changes their date and you've chosen March second, it means that we are running a special election in that town on March second. So if there is a town who chooses to vote in May or in April, you will be running a special election in that town on March second. If the town is running their regular election on March second and perhaps the majority aren't, then it's not an issue, life goes on as normal. Legislature also plans to have mail-in ballots again, like they did for the presidential election. Legislature has appropriated two million dollars statewide to support the costs of the mail-in ballots. It don't yet, it cost them one and a half million for the presidential election, they don't yet know what it will cost for this one. But that gives you some idea, so they don't know if two million dollars is enough or not. But you would be incurring the cost otherwise of a special election if a town chooses to change their date. I'm not really getting any answers, the towns don't, the towns don't really want to the town clerks that we have talked to have indicated that their town select boards have not really decided yet because they're waiting to see what the legislature is doing. Unfortunately, you don't have the luxury of waiting to see what your towns are doing and what the legislatures are doing. So we're making an assumption tonight that you're going forward on town meeting day with your election. Since you're going to meet next week, if there's something that happens between now and next week, I'll fill you in. But to go forward with town meeting day, you pretty much have to have your budget finalized and your ballot finalized by the end of next week, beginning of the week after, which, and then I'll, and then the clock starts a number of different steps, when the annual report has to be out, when your annual meeting is. The other complication that I'm actually going to testify on, if school districts run separate elections, is your charter says your votes are commingled. So if you have six different elections happening throughout our six different towns on six different dates, you won't know until the final election whether or not your budget passed, even if you started on town meeting day. Personally, I don't think that school districts were thought of at all in, in the development of this legislation. It's irrelevant, however. It's intended to, you know, make things easier for the towns who are really struggling right now as well. But for us, it is going to ca, it can cause a lot of complications. I think the cleanest for us to do is to just stay with our town meeting day plan, that's when everyone expects to vote anyway. And if we end up running a special election, we end up running a special election. I mean, if we end up running a solo special, then we do. And if we end up, you know, having to deal with different dates, then we do. But we can't really control any of that, and I don't think that the timing of this legislation, had it happened in August, it would have been wonderful, plenty of time this fall to talk with our towns. But the timing of it happening now is not very friendly to the school district legislated process. Questions on that?
Yeah, lots of them. What's the league say, what does VSA say, what does FASBO say?
The League, FASBO, VSA basically are, have the message that this is going to happen, and so what they say is
According to who?
It's according to the legislative leaders, so the message is
We don't know who they are, do we?
Well, so the message is from all organizations is and, and the request of the governor is towns need to be working with school districts. It doesn't mean that you're going to land on the same day, but we, we need to collaborate. So for example, for us to even run a, an election alongside the town, in some of our towns, we can't get civil authority folks to help count the ballots. We can't get people to show up. If we're running our own special election on town meeting day, it's going to be even worse without the town's help. Our town offices need to be open for those walk-in ballots on a day that they wouldn't otherwise have to be open. So the message really is towns and districts have to work together. Again, I'm, I'm testifying tomorrow, Bill, and I'll, I'll help bring forward some of these logistical issues, but the message pretty clearly is I was going to say it facetiously, as my kids would say, too bad, so sad, this is what's going to happen, so how do we make it happen? As, you know, in, in the best way that we can, and I've been, I've been really struggling with this for the school district, and I, I really think that the best thing that you can do is just stick with town meeting day and then see what the fallout is. There may be none, all six of our towns may say too complicated, we're sticking, and it may not, it may turn out not to be an issue for us at all, but we don't know, because the select boards don't have a law to react to yet.
You might mention to whoever you're testifying to that superintendents and school districts have had a sort of a busy year recently. And that putting this kind of initiative on, which has uncertain consequences, it just isn't wise.
Well, and back to Barry's point about it's a difficult year to pass any budget at all. This is one more complication where you have, you could end up having voters voting on a school district budget and a town budget at two entirely different times. It's just one more complication. But it is what it is. Laurie, are you calling on hands? I see Barry, I don't see the second hand, but it says that, oh, Barry and Angela.
Angela, I'm not, I don't know if Barry's hand was up from, I think it was up.
Barry was first.
No, I just never put my hand down.
That's what I thought, so Angela, go ahead.
No, I was just curious, what, what is the positives for the towns to have it at different times? I don't underst, I guess I don't understand the benefit. Even if, even for the town, how is this good for them?
I'm not sure, Brenda, do you know?
Like, why are they pushing it so much then?
I think that the only thing I can think of is they think if you have more time.
You'll know more about federal.
More information about what your costs are. I, I don't really know, it's a really good question, Angela, I don't understand why, because I don't know, I, I don't think towns saw the same increase in, in costs associated with you know, responding to COVID that schools did, so I don't know where their uncertainty comes from, why, why it is so much more uncertain for them in, in this session than it is anyone else, I don't, I don't know. The detriment for us is in order to get and tax town clerks, because they're the ones who do tax bills, is in order for us to get tax bills out because schools are statewide, they are not town by town. So school-wide tax rates are set at the state level, we have to have a voter-approved budget by June first that has passed the thirty-day reconsideration. So, you know, pushing it later for us is a challenge because of that. But I don't know what the benefit is even to towns.
Well, the other issue that I see though is that if they're going to send out ballots to the entire state like they did for the presidential election, if they have towns doing all different dates, that's going to make it horrendous for the Secretary of State's office.
Yeah, it is, let them testify to that. And it's a double mailing if, if we're not doing it together, and again, our towns can't tell me yet when they're going to do it, but it may not be an issue at all, but I wanted you to be aware of the potential issue that you could be running your own election in a town here or there.
Okay, any other questions?
Not on that, and then electronic annual report, do you want to have that?
Yeah, why don't we do that now?
Want to final, close that question, or?
So the, so the question is, is whether we want an electronic annual report, but that would be for next year, not this year, correct? Because it has to be
Right.
It has to be voted on by the public.
Right, it has to be voted on by the public, and the reason it came up at this time is because for the first time, you will probably have more public voting than you ever have come to your annual meeting, especially as Bill points out, it gets less and less each year. So as opposed to a dozen or two dozen people determining that question, you actually have your entire public because they'd all receive a mail-in ballot. So that's why it seemed like it was appropriate timing to bring up the question. Last time there were some really, you had some really solid, both pro and con arguments. If you went to an electronic ballot, it would mean that we would not mail home the, we would not automatically mail to every voter the annual report, but we would have it in town hall, library, schools, obviously on the website, a postcard would go home and we would mail it to anybody who wants it mailed to them. But they would have to take the initiative to either go pick one up or ask for it to be mailed. You know, I, I think it was Mike who talked about how he's, he's not a, he's more of a digital person. And I think Kevin perhaps talked about how it's, it's really, or maybe it was Barry, how it's, it's a PR for the district, which is also true. So it's totally your call whether you wish to bring it up this year or not.
Lost in the shuffle in the last discussion, I thought, Barbara made a suggestion that I thought made a lot of sense and I wish we did more time to discuss, and that was having an opt-in for electronics for people like Mike rather than an opt-out for people who are perhaps less savvy and might miss the opting out, get the paper copy. In other words, the default assumption is that you're going to get a paper copy unless you opt in for electronics, and that would help the tech-savvy people who are on top on the issue, and it would help the people who aren't paying attention or aren't so tech-savvy.
Unfortunately, the statute isn't written that way, the statute is written the opposite way. I, I can't judge why or how, but, but it doesn't give us the option, you know, the default is it's a paper unless you opt out to an electronic, you can't, you can't change the statute on that, I mean.
So, but with, with Kevin's and Barbara's idea though, if you, if you stuck with I, I'm not sure we'd get any response, if you stuck with paper and sent a postcard saying, do you want us to not mail it to you this year? I, I'm guessing that the majority of the people who do want it mailed to him also wouldn't bother telling us that.
It's possible we could maybe if, if we ask this question and if it was approved, maybe we could submit the, the postcard or even a, a two-sided postcard that allowed people to say pull off the bottom, return it to us postage-free and say, send me a paper copy. And then we would send them a paper copy. The paper copy and the electronic copy both come with timelines that they have to be in people's hands before the town meeting. But there might be something we could do in that, you know, so we're going to send out an announcement anyways, and maybe people, you know, every voter or every person on the checklist gets that, maybe there's an opportunity to, you know, tear sheet, put it in the mail and ask us to mail them a paper copy.
That's still a complex extra step.
Yeah, doesn't that cost us double postage?
Well, wouldn't cost us double postage because there's two costs associated with the paper copy, one is just the actual paper, which is on a twenty-one million dollar budget, not worth our time to be talking about. The other is the economic or environmental cost of, and I think we've all seen it when you go to the post office and you see that big box full of annual reports in it. You know, so it's that, that sort of, you know, salt in the open wound that so many of them just get trashed. So, you know, I have no idea how many people would be interested in the paper copy, so it'd be hard to predict whether it would be more expensive or not in the long run. You know, the, the idea is we could get it out early enough so that they know that if they want a paper copy, they have to, you know, here's your notice, get it, send it back to us.
And if you did electronic, you were actually required to send notification of when the electronic is available, so that you have to do that mailing anyway. Like a postcard or something.
I see you, I really do. Go ahead.
I, I just wanted to kind of reiterate, it was actually Greg's point at the last meeting and that I had supported, that the, the mailing of that pamphlet out is a great opportunity, and we really should look at it as an opportunity, an outreach opportunity, there's a lot of information in there that we historically put out that people don't typically know about the organization, about, you know, focuses, about goals, all those kinds of things. And it, it's just a tremendous opportunity. When I back in the, in the November meeting, when I requested to have a session in February where we did work on our, our opportunities for communication and outreach, it was really more about disseminating information than it was about soliciting information. I think in, in the past, we've had with, with help from Allison, we've had sessions where we really did a lot of stakeholders' solicitation, you know, with, and it was topical, whether it was middle school or those types of things. And I think what a gap that we have is, is that we really don't do a lot of disseminating information, where we can really kind of educate people around you know, focuses and intentions and goals. you know, focuses and intentions and goals and challenges. And I think this is an opportunity for us to do that in, in a very standard annual way. And I, and I would hesitate to lose that opportunity, or if, if we did, I would probably be lobbying next year to find a replacement for that opportunity. That's all.
I think it's a valid point.
Kevin?
Well, I, I, I think Barry makes an excellent point. I just wanted to make a, a less, more personal one, I guess I'd say, that unlike Mike, and I think there are a lot of people like me, uh, the more complex the document, the more likely I am to use paper. Go back and forth between pages. Um, uh, for me, it's always easier to consider something on the written page than, uh, there's, there's a tendency online to, um, flip my things to, you know, hit the next link, skim and, and, and if you're doing a budget, it's not a process. It's conducive to that sort of electronic habit. Um, so I, I just think this, this is great value in paper and, and the, you know, the recycling costs and the printing costs are, 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 are not worth saving, um, as opposed to the loss we'd have with that.
I would just want to put out there, since I don't see anybody else's hand raised, um, the fact that we're talking about whether or not we want to do it, blah, 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 but, um, we probably capture more people on this question during a vote, a budget vote than we would talking about it as 13 people. And isn't this one of those things where we want to ask the constituents of our community what they want? And so all we're really doing is asking them the question. They could very well come back and say, no, we want a paper copy, which they did the last time we put this on our, uh, ballot. So I don't see why we can't put it on the ballot and ask them what they want.
Then if you put it on the ballot, are we going to make people already upset, more upset? That worries me too.
Well, I just, I don't know. I think if, if, if we're trying to save trees and we're trying to do whatever, the, the, the smoothest way to get through this is to just keep it the way it is and put, put it out there, put it on our website, put it somewhere where we can gather the names of people that don't want the mail and just allow them to opt out. And then people that don't put their names in the bucket or don't put their names on the list, still get the, the mail and we, there's no vote needed. There's no, nothing changes, but we could potentially save in the printing costs by the people that are electronic and put their name on a list. Am I missing something?
Well, I don't think that we can because the current law says we will mail it to every voter.
Even if there's an opt-out list.
I mean, right. We could give them a place to drop off the one they don't want, you know?
I know, but you still got to print it. So that doesn't help any.
Does anyone else think?
We all get junk mail all the time and, and recycle it and it's part of our daily lives and, uh, to, you know, are, are we attempting to solve a problem here that doesn't exist? Did we had people complaining that we're, we're wasting tax dollars or that?
We've had a couple people complain that they didn't want it. Why did we send it to them? We're wasting tax dollars. Not an outcry.
Well, I, I think we need to wait for an outcry because I'm, um, you know, as I said last time, I'm very concerned about the people who would be, who would have this information disappear on them, uh, because they're not tech-savvy. Even, you know, I'm, I'm fairly tech-savvy, but it's not something I'm, I probably wouldn't notice it.
I think we just quite aren't there yet. I think maybe in another generation, you might see all electronics. But I think we have just enough people in this world right now that we're right on the cusp of going all fully electronic. I think, uh, I think, you know, in the next decade, maybe you'll see everything go electronic, but I think it's too soon yet.
Okay, so I'm going to put it to a vote then, um.
Well, there's no motion at the moment.
Well, I don't think we need a mo, well, do we need a motion if, if.
If we're going to vote.
Someone make the motion.
If, if there's a, you would need a motion to, um, put on the ballot. Um, I don't have a motion worded, but motion to put.
Makes a motion, then we don't even have to consider it, correct?
That's right.
So you can make a motion whether you want to, want to do this or not want to do this, or we can make no motion and we let it ride for a year. I'm counting to 10.
Backwards?
No, because I'm not really good at that slate.
I heard a bell.
Okay, hearing from no one, that means that no one wants to make a motion and therefore this whole conversation, um, may take place again next year, but right now we will stay with the paper copy.
Okay. And just to know, I did follow up with Tim Giles, who was at the last meeting about combining, uh, for, and Brandon at least sending us shared report. So they'll be the front half, will be the back half. And I've approached Pittsburgh. They answered me, but I haven't read the answer yet.
Okay. So I'm going to keep going under government's process because we do only have 20 minutes left.
Thanks, Brenda.
Bye, Brenda. Thank you.
Thank you all. See you next week.
We may push our monitoring report off again another month. Um, but we do need to do our second reading of policy 2.8.11, um, which is in your packet. It says, got to get there, sorry.
It was, um, allow the board to be uninformed in a timely manner of all significant gifts to the district, all significant gifts to the district.
To the district. Okay.
And this is your second reading, I think.
Anyone want to make a motion?
Uh, Barbara's waving her.
Sorry, I can only see the top five people. Okay, so Barbara's making the motion.
Barbara, you're not a top five, sorry.
I'm sorry. I don't pick the top five.
All second.
Okay, perfect. Um, okay, so discussion regarding this, we've already had our first, um, reading of this, which we approved. Does anyone have any additional discussion regarding this policy and adding those, changing it to, to the district?
It looks like the cat is waving his ears.
I thought it was Bonnie, right. I thought Bonnie had a question, then I realized it was the cat's ear.
That cat is adorable.
It is cute.
As the dog.
He's hiding from my kids. The dog stepped on the chrome box.
Kevin, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, unfortunately I can't. My computer's so slow, I can't bring up the minutes of. But I just want to reiterate, uh, this is a serious point. Everybody seemed to think it wasn't. The way it's currently written literally does not make sense in English. Uh, and I think, you know, it's, that's, that's bad policy first. And secondly, you know, we're school board. We're supposed to be encouraging literacy. We talk about literacy education and things all the time. And then to go do something that's completely illiterate, it's, 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 it's kind of hypocritical is not the right word, but it, it, it's, it's breathtakingly oblivious to the purpose of the entire enterprise of being a school board. Uh, so, um, you know, it's some, on the one hand, yeah, it's a minor thing. It's, we're, we only get 15 minutes. We got to get through this. On the other hand, you know, we're promulgating a sentence that literally does not make sense, uh, in English. And, uh, is this the way we want to, is this what we want to teach our kids? I'm going to vote no.
So, so the sentence, if you took out all those other ones in between would be, the superintendent shall not allow the board to be uninformed in a timely manner of all significant gifts to the district. That's what you're voting on.
So are we dropping, does that mean we're dropping these, those intervening clauses then?
No, you're only voting on the section 11 part, on this part.
Really? Right. We are only voting on that part 11. So does anyone else have any other discussion regarding this? And Kevin, jump back in if you have additional information. Okay, I'm not seeing any. So I'm going to bring this to a vote. So all of those in favor of the, um, second reading of this policy, which says, number 11, allow the board to be uninformed in a timely manner of all significant gifts to the district. Please press your green button. All of those that do not like it, press your red button, please. So Mike and Becky, if you could wave at me, yes or no?
Becky did. It's Bonnie.
Okay, so I just need, oh, and she, she went off the, okay, perfect. Okay. Okay, so it passes for our second reading, so it is formally adopted. Thank you for that. Uh, let's see. Finalize board's input for superintendent evaluation, executive session.
So your Otter Valley tracking tool in the packet for recorded board decisions is your, um, your input to the superintendent evaluation? Um, if you wish to add to it, you should do so in an executive session, maybe after you do other, finish up your stuff.
Okay, so we'll come back to it. Um, annual bor, board work plan review.
So next meeting will be just simply a special budget meeting on January 13th. Um, and then January 20th, um, Outright Vermont is coming to do a presentation on LGBTQ issues in schools. And there was also some discussion, is that when, do you also want Allison to come and talk about the task force report or are we putting that off till later? It wasn't clear to me. Do you want both those things on the 20th?
Do we have enough time for both?
I think it'll be tight.
So no.
Okay, that's what I.
I don't want to give either one of them a false, you know, not give them enough time for what they need to do.
Yeah.
And I think the task force stuff really unfortunately is going to have to wait until after town meeting.
Okay. I think that makes sense because then you'd have a new board all getting up to speed at the same time.
Yep. Barbara, your hand is up.
I just wanted to say that I appreciated the ability to look back at the task force summation and reread some of the goals. So thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah, that was good. Okay.
Okay. Superintendent report?
Yep.
So the two primary things that I want to talk about in the superintendent report, one is, and I'm sorry she's left because I wanted to recognize her, but Judy Pulcifer has announced her retirement at the end of this school year. Um, the process that I've used to hire all the other principals I've hired, Judy will be my second to last that I'm replacing, which is a little unsettling. But anyway, um, has been, I, I, I tried to do an inclusive process. Um, and yet I am fully aware that the responsibility is mine to bring you a candidate that you can support. So what I have done in the past, and, and I wanted to talk to you before I put it out to staff, is I will set up a search advisory committee that consists of different representatives from the National B faculty and staff and parent community. Um, generally this committee is between seven and 12 people. That's really about the largest you can go, and so it is representative. The role of that advisory committee is to help me, I would, I would post the ad and it would help me sift through the applications and help determine which of those applications meet the ad that we put out because I write an ad and I seek for people, I seek people who actually meet the criteria I put in the ad. Um, so that committee would help sift through those applications and identify an unspecified amount of folks to come in for an interview. It all depends on what we get. Um, then when we identify who's coming in for an interview, um, generally speaking, it seems to be around four people come in, but it, it's not a magical number. Um, those people would be scheduled in, scheduled in for an entire day in the district. And they would, we generally have two people a day. And they would be there from in the morning, greeting parents and students as they arrive, visiting classrooms throughout the day, seeing how the school is run, getting a feel for the school. And people also have an informal way of getting a feel for them. Um, parents are told that they'll be there before and after school, so parents can meet and greet them. Staff knows that they're coming. Um, generally our sixth graders might have an opportunity to meet with them as well. Then after school, there's a staff forum where a, a, also during the day, they would be interviewed by the search advisory committee in their formal interview. And then after school, there is a staff forum where any staff who is interested would come to an informal interview, listen, ask questions and provide some written, written feedback on, um, strengths and challenges of each candidate, which would be taken under consideration by me. And then in the evening, we would do the same for parents. When we did this at Barstow last year, because it was totally virtual, we actually had 50, we actually combined the staff and parent one, and we had 50 people participate on Zoom, much, much more than we had in person. And so the candidate, you know, again, has a chance to speak of themselves and answer questions. And I collect in a survey format, um, people's impressions of strengths and challenges. Then the search advisory committee helps me sift through those, but I also use that information for my reference checks, um, additional reference checks, questions that people bring up. And then ultimately I do a final interview with, um, any candidates that kind of sift to the top in that process. And the board, by the way, is welcome to meet the candidates when they come during the day, be part of the public forum piece. Um, also have a chance to get to know the candidates. And I would share with you their resumes. And then ultimately I would bring you a final candidate for approval at the end of this process. I'd like to get started on it right away and hopefully wrap something up around February break is ideal. Um, this is kind of in, in the state of Vermont, we have just entered the first round of principal searches. After February break is kind of the second round of principal searches. And after April break is kind of the third round. So Judy's early notification allows us to jump into the first round. And, um, I, I, that's much preferable. I am concerned with a year of COVID under us that people will apply to be a principal. I'm, I'm concerned about having an applicant pool. Um, I'm, I'm aware of more people retiring than coming into the field at the moment. So being in the first round is, is beneficial to us. So any questions or concerns about continuing with that process? Some of you have participated in it before. Some. Okay, so I'll move forward. Um, also right before vacation, we did have some positive COVID cases in the district as you were informed. Um, and as of right now, today, we don't have new positive cases coming out of, um, the December break. But I think the next several days are going to be key. Um, if we do have any positive cases, we do work with the Department of Health. Our goal is to stay open if it's safe to do so. And our goal is to return to our previous in-person schedule, I mean, what we've been doing all year. Um, next week. We, we became very, very, very low in staff at Otter Valley on the two days before Christmas or before the December break. And we very honestly punted, combined classes. Um, teachers could teach from home, but the in-school, um, supervision became very light. So we have to watch for that. The governor will not allow us now to ask the gathering questions, so we won't ask that. Um, but I think that enough people now kind of get the gist of what he was saying and will self-identify. So we'll, we'll, at the moment, you know, everything I just said could change five minutes from now if I get a phone call. Um, and I think this weekend will kind of tell us if things pop up and then over the next week. But at the moment, we plan on returning on Monday. I think that in hindsight, I feel very good about the decision to have stayed remote this week. Um, with information coming my way, I think people needed this week to kind of clear out the holiday break. Um, if there were New Year's, New Year's Eve gatherings, they won't show up for another week, but prior to that. That's it. That's it Lori, do you need an executive session for superintendent eval discussion or?
Sorry, I was muted. Barbara, your hand is up. Do you have a question?
I didn't have a question, I just had a comment that I wanted to concur with what Jean just said about the coming back remotely after break. I, as a parent, this is me just as my parental perspective in my particular household, it's been a nice transition, you know, kind of getting back in the swing of school habits and gearing up toward, it's, it's like a accelerated version of what happened in the fall. So next week, if they get to, you know, go back in person, then they'll be that much more excited to be in person with their teachers and friends and might make them appreciate, I think. That's what I see. It also gives me an insight into what they're learning, which I also appreciate. And they're learning some cool stuff.
Nice.
And they are learning some cool stuff in their music class. I just wanted to say, they have a pretty neat music teacher, Mr. Varian. So, anyway, thanks.
Cool. Okay, so, couple things. I'm definitely pushing the monitoring report 4.3 to February. Hopefully we'll get to it then. Our next meeting is next week to talk about the special, it's our special budget meeting to talk about the budget. And then we also have our regular board meeting on Wednesday, January 20th at 6:00 PM. So at this time, I need someone to make the motion to go into executive session to talk about the superintendent's report. Or superintendent's evaluation.
And do you want the superintendent present when you do that? It's not your evaluation.
Right.
You're not giving an evaluation at this point, you're providing information to RNESU.
Yep.
I'm not hearing a motion.
I'm not either, so maybe they're okay with what, so if you guys are okay with what's on that form, it was page, I pulled it up, it's page 47 of 88, which just talks about the tracking tool for all of the reports that we have monitored. We've monitored five of the policy 2. whatevers. They were all in compliance. And then we've done our, we've done one of ours. So if there's nothing to add to that, to provide to RNESU for the student evaluation or other comments.
I'll make a motion to discuss, I found the form confusing.
Okay. Is there a second? And Kevin, before I let you go, superintendent present?
Sure.
Okay, and Mike, you're seconding that? Okay, so we're going into executive session at 7:56. I don't believe Charlene that there will be anything coming out of executive session to report. And so we'll just email you the time that we finished.